Is ready? Motion to approve. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the previous meeting. Motion is second to approve minutes. Any additions or corrections? You're in on it, go by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills and the traditional bills on this.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. The motion is second to approve the bills. Any questions or discussion? You're in on it. Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything fun in there? I think not that reason, you're too busy.
Uh, no.
I think we're a little over in the general.
Yeah, well.
That's because we pulled some of the salt to also back over.
We, uh... There's still the one in town that we're trying to... It's in the program. Get it fixed.
We want it up.
It's the listing.
Oh, yeah, it's like over on now, just.
Well, we're not.
We're not, but it's.
We're not, it's... Just trying. Just trying to fix it. How about I take them?
Questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve financial reports. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financials are approved. Agenda, any additions?
Um, I added a rapper from it.
You got on here?
Um, it should be three.
Should be three instead of two?
Yep, yep, they just gave me yesterday, so.
Yeah. Any additional apple from it? Anything else? There's nothing, I have the motion to approve the agenda suspended.
Move to approve. Second.
The motion is second to approve the agenda, discussion. Seeing none, on paper, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries, the agenda is second. Did Bill just move in it?
Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to congratulate the commissioners for making this kind of white today. That's something I wanted to see just yet.
It was too bad, yeah.
It's quite. And we're gonna freeze up too. Um, I'd like to introduce our new assistant, our administrative assistant. Her name is Maren Gallickson. She is going to college up at Wake Region. Be finishing her two-year this spring. And assures us that she's here to staple up because she happens to have a friend from here. So she's gonna finish her four-year here online, so that'll be a good thing. So you can stop up and greet her, come up and talk to her about anything. If she's already phoned up, people call and ask her all kinds of questions. What are you doing, where are you from? Uh, she's from Valley City. Played volleyball for the Royals. And we're really glad to have her aboard. She'll be working Monday through Thursday afternoons. And then we'll wait and see how her schedule is for this next semester, maybe to change. And then because we've agreed with the commission of keep her on for 16 hours a week, starting next week and the week after for Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, her time's gonna vary a little bit. There might be a full day in there or something, but just to get her 16 hours, so.
Well done.
Glad to be here.
And, um, we don't need to talk about crops and stuff. But I would encourage you to stop up, you know, with our new format until we get a new person hired, fully hired, you know, that Sarah hasn't been accepted as halftime SCW, halftime MP yet. And then Sammy moved into the middle office as an additional 16 hours of 4H. I'm telling you, that girl's busy. She's coming up with things, oh my lord. She's wearing me out. So stop up sometime and say hi and just see what we did, the things have changed. It looks way different, completely different. Um, I guess I don't know anything else for that. Roundup, put that on your calendar, please, of January 8th and 9th. And again, we'd be asking if we can have that end door down there open again. Got a full, full agenda again of like, thanks to the chamber for coming over for the first day feeding us all a good meal. I did get them to switch it up a little bit this year though. I've asked that we do not have female hot dish. I'm not a pasta guy, even though it should be. So this year we're having catered, right?
Yes, we are.
Catered.
So, questions? Comments about the office or anything? We've got a lot of 4H stuff coming up. Um, we're gonna have some meetings with some kids about some different things. One of the things we're gonna require, and you may hear some about it, is we are gonna make a requirement that all 4H families with animals attend the meeting. And we're gonna talk about just general rules of 4H and ethics and all this kind of stuff. And it's a requirement that if they don't show up, they're not gonna be allowed to show their achievement gate. It's something that we just need to get addressed. We had some couple issues last year, we just need to make sure that we get it covered.
You have two meetings then, so they have an opportunity to make one of them, or?
Just work. Um, it will be a meeting when they have a, their own club meeting. Yeah. So it's already on their agenda.
They'll go to the club meeting then?
Yep. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Morning, thank you.
Cindy did tell her that she can't wear high heels. This is for Cindy, she already goes like this. She said, no, my pity heels.
Thanks. Thank you, Bill.
Roger, morning. Hi. Um, our old floor scrubber machine died last week. Well, we couldn't get parts for it anymore, I guess roughly. Uh, had been had it here since 86, so they, uh, the salesman was pretty amazed we still had that, but nobody does anymore. Anyway, I got estimates on the new one. Actually got five different estimates from two companies. Uh, Stein's, um, a couple, uh, Advance, and which is the brand we have now. Um, and you see the numbers of 43... 4364, 4290, and this Viper, I've never heard of that company before, about 3719. And then a couple from JS Fending for a Clark brand for 3764, and then Advance for 4253. Um, I'm thinking of going with the Clark. I've never used a Clark scrubber machine like this, but we've got an old Clark buffer that I use for sending the gym floor, and that thing was made at the newest, I'd say, early 60s. So just goes to show that it's taken a long time. So at least that's the one I'm thinking of getting. And the Clark regarding the other ones, they're all pretty much the same, um, the same width. They all take the 20-inch pad. Um, their size wise and capacity, they're all pretty much the same, so. I guess my, my thoughts are going with this Clark for the 376419, and also that would be from JS Fending.
The money's all about the same?
Well, um, you know, yeah, the prices, you know, even from top to bottom, it's only about $500. Difference in price.
Okay. The motion to go with the Clark from JS Fending.
I'm questioning, you mean, the price, what were they? Did you say?
Uh, 3764 for the Clark.
That's fine.
And that's pretty close to the low bid, that was on the other one too, so.
Yeah, you want it to come with a sound dampening feature?
Sound dampening feature, oh, they're a lot.
You're the most annoying sound next to fingernails on a chocolate.
Build an insulation cage here under there.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, seconds to approve by any Clark with 3764 from JS Fending. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, also, I'm gonna replace some of the entire flush valves. The, uh, they're original at the building, and we've scrubbed them so much for the, at the chrome finishes wearing off, and we're starting to see the brass down underneath, which doesn't look the best. So I got estimates on replacing eight of those. Um, the 379 apiece from Matt Plumbing and 268 from Ploncher's.
$2.68?
Uh, no.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah.
And apparently they're gonna do the, do the shut offs and all that, so they're gonna shut the water up.
We'll be doing this on Monday, hopefully, they can get the stuff in, so nobody's gonna be here. Um, and yes, actually, we're gonna replace from where it comes out, all the whole thing, 'cause some of the shut offs are corroded inside or something, or some of them you can't shut them off.
Well, yeah, if they're original.
So, yeah. So anyway, but, uh... Pardon?
Play player, we're gonna play.
Okay. Discussion over there?
I move to approve the long gate from Ploncher's, second.
Okay. The motion is second to approve the long gate from Ploncher's to replace flush valves and shut offs. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Also, a couple more things. The city police department came in Monday, I believe it was. And they've got, for getting into different buildings around town, they had a bazillion keys, and they wanna kind of eliminate that. So they were getting, uh, wondering if we could put these in? If I can install this outside, like the west main entrance and probably the north door? They have one key for different businesses around town, they're putting these up, so they would have one key to get into this, and then we would put one of our key fobs inside of here, so that way they could get in without having a whole bunch of keys for all the different buildings. It doesn't benefit us any, it benefits them, but it doesn't hurt us any either. So, um... I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't.
I mean, what's the, how easy are those little things to break in to get the fob out? That's just my only question.
I mean, these are metal, it'd be pretty tough.
That would be my only concern, yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody comes in.
And that's what I thought, I would, too, but no, and, you know, it'd be pretty difficult to get inside of this thing, so.
You won't confuse the public, I mean, if they come out and use it, no.
No, the public couldn't use it in any way. There, it's, I mean, you know, this little thing won't be perhired, wouldn't even notice it.
Yeah, you're just gonna set it off to the side of the door and they'll know what's there basically, and you'll do it.
Automatically it'll open the door then?
No, this is, this will have nothing to do with the general public opening the door. This'll just be for the police department, if after hours they needed to get in here, it'll have these things, they're all keyed the same all around town. They have one key that'll get into here, and then we would have our courthouse key fob inside of here. And then they would just be able to get in.
Really, the only risk would be if one of these master keys fell into the hands of somebody else.
Right, and that's the police department's issue. And that'd be their issue, it's not ours. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Are they very expensive, or is the city? Um, yeah. I believe they were $85.
How often do they come in, or just?
Oh, I don't know that they ever have when I've been here.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
These are also going up on all the apartment buildings, all the businesses, all the... So we can call, we don't have to have a manager meet us there, because most of them are buzzed in now, or security code entrances. So this is a way that, like I said, we don't have a key ring that's this big, and which key is it for the Gilverson or?
So are you guys gonna be on the same system?
We have, they're giving us keys as well, so we have access also.
So we're gonna have access to the apartment buildings in top?
Yes.
Yeah, I know the college and here.
We're there a lot. We call there a lot, depending on which apartment building you're top to call.
Prairie Department?
Prairie Department, I'm used to also.
I suppose like in an apartment building, you can understand if you've got outside lock systems on it, and then there's something going on inside.
Most outside entrances are either buzzed in now or key entries. Or heat pad. So this bypasses that for us, for, uh...
Makes sense.
Also, it's pretty much the businesses that want to participate in, you know, all the... There's a lot of keys out there, though, Prairie Department, Ploncher's Department, a lot of keys.
Right, but right now, the, they have keys to get in here already, so this is just going to consolidate their keys.
Yeah, it's just simplifying it for them, so they've got one master.
Right, key, key in and out. Key in and out many buildings.
They actually return the outside door keys.
Yeah.
So they call it how does it be fob? And they don't even need to return that, because all you have to do is go into the system and delete it.
I mean, if I lose my key fob, tomorrow I call Candy and she just wipes it out of the system, it doesn't work anymore. In a matter of, as soon as she takes it out, then like, give you this, you can do one, or...
That's it.
All the key fobs are the same way, so it's...
That's not gonna change the fob system we have, instead of having to rekey the lot.
And that's the, that's the benefit of having that fob system.
I make the motion, go ahead and allow Roger to get those and come out to the city where they need to be placed.
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion is second to allow for buying the little boxes to put the key fob in for the shut offs. This for, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Um, just last night, I finally got some numbers back for a new wheelchair lift for going down the basement of Memorial. Um, I think you guys all got copies? So I will continue to try and get, um, another one at least. Um, the one grant that we were going to try and get from North Central Planning, that, uh, that one, I want to say expired, or they're, um, last Friday. So I wish I could've gotten this last week, but anyway. Um, I'll talk to Sandy shively and see about any other grants, or maybe, uh, Jeff Britt and I were talking yesterday, maybe even NRA, since this is a, uh, kind of a shooting thing that we, you know, that they wanna get down there for. I'll talk to the gun, they have some ideas that may, grants may be available. But at any rate, like I said, I finally got eight rights, so it's just nice to know. And I'll just keep going from here. And I might add, I can't believe how toxic it's been to get this. So not just kind of an informational thing for now.
You think for that kind of money, they'd be more than happy to throw it a bull pretty quick?
You know, the ones, I've talked to several different ones, apparently, none of these wheelchair lift companies need any more business, because they've, uh...
Busy enough?
What, four now I've talked to? And they, they keep saying, yeah, yeah, and you never call them back, and, yeah. Well, the other unfortunate thing is that it is, none of these are extremely reliable. All of them need some sort of maintenance. So do you, do you tend to wanna fit those within your local area? We don't have a local area that, and that fixes and works on.
And then we get caught up in service contract a little bit more, because they have to drive some option company to service on it. Yeah, well, it is what it is, I guess. Keep exploring, I guess.
With that, you know, I'd like to, I guess, continue to ask permission to be able to utilize the basement media room for our simulator, our shotgun simulator for 4H and shooting sports. We did that last winter, we never moved it over there, over the time constraints that we had, but we have that shotgun simulator down in the basement of the memorial building that we, or in that built to access because of the lift situation.
Do you need a motion for that?
I guess that'd be up to you guys.
Probably doesn't matter, I make the motion.
Okay.
We'll, we'll follow the schedules and the same thing that we did last year for it. We'll let people know when, when we're gonna plan on being in here and those kind of things, but...
Okay.
Unless we find another suitable building. I guess I'd second that.
All right. That puts it in. Yeah, we were fine with that last year, so I just, you really got, you know. Anyway, a motion is second to allow, uh, simulator to go into the downstairs basement media room. Maybe we live in a memorial building, we don't have any accessibility. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, one other thing, uh, our sound panels are here for putting up in the, um, big media room downstairs, if anybody wants to take a look at them. They're stacked in a hall there right now, they're supposed to be coming Monday to get them in. Uh, and if they need to still be here Tuesday, I mean, there's no work going on, media room's open, so. Monday, Tuesday, should get it done.
Yeah. We'll see if it helps.
Yeah, hope so.
All right, thanks, Roger.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, I just, we need to select the valves on the engines on our three John Deere motorvators, and got an estimate to do each one, it was $1,331, so, so it was gonna be right at $4,000.
Move to approve, second.
I have motion is second to approve, uh, thirty-five valve on the John Deere motorvators. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And then the only other thing I have is updating our five-year road plan, I hope they wanna do that today or set a date, but I did include a copy of the updated version. Basically, just rotate our projects from the top to the bottom. So that's what this updated version is, is the rotated projects.
We moved that.
On Highway 2 here, we moved that a couple minutes ago. Yep, so on the projects page, we used to be the three-by-hamlet ones first. We rotated that one, two of those to the top, at least. Kevin, excuse my ignorance, but what does A D D stand for? Average Daily Traffic. Gotcha. Day.
The only question I had looking at it was, uh, let's see, the bridge question.
Oh, yeah, so we should go there.
The, the ratings, is five bad or?
Fives are bad.
That's what I was looking at, going, I don't know how the rating scale works, so I would assume five would be bad, since that's at the top of the list.
In fact, that rating was, uh, was many, many years ago, we did it on a different commission, but, uh, it was, uh, how much it's used, not, not the condition, but how much traffic it generates.
That's an internal rating that we put on it, so it's not used very often if it's a five then.
No, it's used a lot.
It's used a lot if it's a five.
Exactly.
And that's one that needs to be, so that's not the state rating then, where they put the number on it, zero to 100 then?
No, that was something that, the only question came up, but.
Okay. So the first one we need to have replaced is that one at Triumph then?
Yeah, next year we'll probably do two of them, there's one a new and also.
And those are ones that we're gonna go, small ones go with culverts then?
Yeah, the bridges now, but the culverts will work fine for them.
Are any of those on that list ones that we're gonna have to go bridge replacement, or they're all gonna be culverts?
Down, further down the list?
Yeah.
Uh, the rest of them on that list are basically prairie trails that maybe get used for a digger or something. They don't even take semi, loaded semis over them, they're out in the middle of nowhere, and dirt trails with brass growing in between the wheelchair tracks, such a thing.
Triumph, that from the H Street?
Which one?
Triumph?
Yes, it is, that, they've maintained that all summer and winter.
Township or county road?
Township. Newland is the same thing.
And these are all?
Highly maintained road.
These are all townships.
Once you get down, the third one down, those turn into prairie trails. So we're caught up to the point for all of our bridges that get used a lot, these are the last two. I mean, we still have some more out there, but they sell them like you do.
What kind of shape are they in?
Uh, they got them wood decks that boards are missing, and, you know, they just, they take a tractor over them, basically.
You are using for loaded trucks.
They might go over them, huh, no, no, they're, they find them all the way around, because the trails are so full of piles and ruts and badger holes, and the roads are bad getting for them.
They are.
Yeah. I have a question on the chip sealing. Uh, that has to be done right after it's, they're paved, huh? It doesn't have to, but they suggest that. Okay. 'Cause I noticed we're, we're paving military road while I drive, and Webster East to Ramsey 3, and those were recently paved. Yeah, that's, the thought is to seal that oil, so it doesn't... Sure. ...fuck in there anymore. And if you don't get it done, it's not like it's the end of the world, but they suggest that. That's the time it does theirs, immediately after the pavement. Makes roads last a little longer? Yep.
With the recycled asphalt pavement, the asphalt mixes a little drier now, too. So we used to wait about three years before sealing them, by now it's, you know, a year, but between one and three, it's still a good idea.
So there's no real rule for that, but the sooner the better? Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the five-year road plan.
I have a motion in the second to approve the five-year road plan. Bridges and chip sealing and all that stuff. Okay, further discussion on that, or any changes to be made?
I have another bridge, you know, like bridge question I'm gonna ask you.
Put one on this and then we'll talk about that, okay?
Okay.
Uh, no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. No.
What was the date that you were gonna get somebody else to look at that one?
They called me the second week, you know, maybe.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, they're inspecting them, but they're doing like, it's a district thing, so they got Benson and Ramsey, so they're out doing them, it's just a matter of when you get to it.
That's the same one, I got a call on that as well, so.
I got, you calling Lando?
Yeah.
I got a call on that from northbound to Highway 2, down the way, but I haven't been on it.
We did gravel that portion, but the bridge is still.
Bandrick got hold of it?
Huh?
Dean Bandrick did hold of it?
No, nobody's got a hold of it.
He called me.
Apparently they go right to you guys, so.
Well, I just, I just got the call.
I directed it back to you, Kevin.
I just got the call with the question of, you know, 'cause it was open, and then we put, you know, fitting gates up, you know, fences up, basically, and they were wondering what the deal was, and it's simple. We just have to wait to get the bridge inspected, basically, 'cause we don't want people driving over it until it's inspected to make sure it's safe.
The bridge is on, yes, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we've got about a mile of it closed around the bridge, basically, where the exit points would be, I mean, not it either.
This particular bridge has hollow stringers, hollow concrete stringers, so we don't know if the water got inside there and froze. That's the only thing that concerns me, otherwise theoretically, it's not supposed to get in there, but, you know, water isn't gonna be in anything, so.
So I can get back to him and tell him when that?
Soon as it's inspected.
We'll open it up.
Yep, we got it grounded yesterday.
The road's in pretty good shape?
You grab it.
Uh, iffy, but they can go down it.
Yeah. It was a township road or?
And it was.
And it was.
It is a county road.
But.
County, that road has been closed. Somebody keeps opening it.
Oh, they're taking it, yeah.
Especially now.
Well, no, but I'm saying it came out of the water and then apparently they must have been using it until we put the gates up around the bridge saying we're gonna.
But there were already signs there that.
Yeah.
You know, you can't keep them up for nothing. But that's the only issue is if what condition that bridge is in.
We stuck some gravel on it too, so that's good. They said the road wasn't in horrible condition. It just needed a little bit of gravel.
We got that though.
Good. Well, then we just gotta get the bridge inspected and hopefully it's okay now.
My guess is it's fine, but.
Still gotta make sure.
They are actually inspecting them all anyway, so.
It's good to put it out.
Okay, another question. Benson County in on this road or did all of them?
Um, they could take care of another one. I mean, we, we do the maintenance and everything. On this one, they do the, the concrete, they have the oil road. You know, they do the mowing and limestone removal and everything on that road and then, so we don't bill each other back and forth.
But we're in charge of this one?
Yes, we're in charge of this one.
And we haven't been doing, because it was underwater, it was the only thing to do anything.
Exactly. Somebody else actually motor for us, which was good. They got cattails and that in the middle of the road knocked down and dead and dying and.
Kevin, they moved the one going to the west right after that and then they moved the one to the church right after that. I can't believe they're gonna fix the one to the church.
Those two would actually be better.
Those are Benson, yeah.
'Cause they're to the west.
But that washout has to be from here to the museum wide and probably twelve, fourteen feet deep. I can't believe they're gonna fix that road.
Now it'd be township road.
Yeah.
Township road.
Not Benson County Township Road.
The water's been up all gone around here, that, that area?
It's down a long ways. It's not gone by any means, but it's down below the concrete deck anyway.
I know, that's why I have a question.
Yeah, it's one of those deals where you rebuild the road, put a bunch of money into it, you don't know where the water's going, unfortunately.
Did we ever get any money from FEMA on this road?
Ah, boy, we must have, I don't remember. We had to send it back though, 'cause we didn't get it used by a certain date.
Because it was underwater?
Yeah.
Did FEMA have, did they have any stipulations on closing roads like that permanently?
Well, no, they left it to locals, not permanently.
Not permanently?
Not permanently.
That was in my head. Well, maybe we had to close it to take the people money.
No, no, they can, they'll let us go spend our own money now to fix it and bring it back to open again.
Alright, one of those transfer function, when they would fund an alternate route, do they, do we have to close those roads?
Nope, you can still, even if you took your money and transferred it somewhere else, you can still take your own money again and fix that road. It's just that they would not, FEMA would not come in and fix it until you spent that same dollar amount on that section of road. And you had to prove that with invoices. So let's just say there was a hundred thousand dollars that we transferred. They would have to put a hundred thousand dollars back into that road before it would be eligible for FEMA again.
Oh, I get what you're saying. So if you took that hundred thousand and used it on another, another road that needed to be grazed, um, so you're using the funds elsewhere, you have to backfill those funds basically?
With the actual amount.
And then once you get to a hundred thousand and one dollar, then you're eligible for paid funds again, so you put the money back in that road.
And they need invoices, but proof that it was done.
Okay. But we just never even used the money because it was always underwater.
Right, we never did cash for any money. Tell us something Ramsey and Benson decided on at the time that we're not gonna transfer any money out of that road because we may wanna use it for FEMA again in the future. So we ended up just giving the money back. On that particular stretch of road.
So if we ever, it's on the water and then the water comes back up again, we ever get a disaster declaration, then we might be eligible again at that point to just try to get some money to rework it again.
And this county line road then, if they want snow removal, then you'll have to supply it or?
I suppose, I mean, nobody lives down there, so they.
There's nobody living down there?
They would have to call us and say, oh, we need to fix a high line wire or whatever, you know, could you plow it?
It was not on the list to keep open for the winter.
No.
Minimum maintenance road sign up?
Well, if it was, uh, summertime, we'd maintain it just to keep the weeds dead, but in the winter time, we don't. Unless somebody requests it.
And do we have a minimum maintenance sign up?
Oh, we don't, no. Probably should have heard you thought of that.
Does it dive into the lake at the end of it?
Does it?
That's what I'm asking.
Honestly, no.
Technically, yes, but the road's out of, that was gonna be my next question. I mean, are there, way into the future, are we even gonna fix further down, further to the south? Because.
My guess.
You know, it's, it's.
But the thing, but my thought there is there's gonna be farmland that'll be accessible also. So we wanna have access to our farmland, that's my thought. If we don't do something, we'll be getting, it's people coming in.
So this isn't technically a township road then? This is, this is a county road?
Do waters wash the road away in places farther south?
Miles of them, couple miles of them probably.
It was a long stretch.
Yeah.
Probably a three-quarter mile stretch.
You have the bridge and then you have a couple miles of good road and then it just kinda goes to the middle of the lake.
Yeah, sometimes you're trying to see where the water's on the road?
Oh, yeah.
If not more.
If not more.
Well, that's what, that was my, where my question was, man, if it dives into the lake and the road's not very great down there, should we probably cordon that off somehow? Because you know what, ice fisherman are gonna try to find a way to get down.
And that is, once you get in that spot, that's.
Okay.
That's why we should have that sign up.
Yeah, they're gonna find, they're gonna try to find a way, it looks like it's a way to get down there.
See if it works.
It'll be outside to pull people out down.
That's actually a road that used to go to Tammy Tollis. Tony made that road on the other side of town.
Right now they gotta close, you don't need the maintenance when you open it up again, you won't. Yeah, so.
Just those person, about three miles.
Three or four miles. So when it gets nice next week, you can have a post.
That's mostly like the, the deer hunters and that type of thing will use it now soon.
Yeah, that, that, that's my only concern is, you know, what kind of liability do we have if they decide to go drive it down the south end of it and then something happens?
The deer hunters are a lot of locals, you know, not out of the area too far, but fishermen, you know where they come from.
When you get to this really bad spot, the cattails are almost as tight as this room, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they know that something bad has come.
You sure?
Take the bottom of their vehicle.
Ask Mr. Nelson, I think he probably have a different, uh, opinion about that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, still gold.
Yeah, I, I, we gotta sign up.
Okay, any other questions on that portion? Sounds like we just need to get the bridge inspected. We'll, like, have to take care of it. Okay, can I ask Kevin?
No.
I guess I can give you an update on the Stratus project. They finally finished, um, on their last assessment. They had twenty days located. They haven't discharged. They got two more coming from the work they did that following weekend on getting normal strips in and all that drags. They're, they're all done. And, uh, the second bid was in mail and they were, you know, putting their damage on the state project, so they're gonna need better support if they're taking that one.
They've just taken on a lot of work, a lot of stuff to do though. I was just thinking of one thing before we went. You know, we did the five-year road plan. We're talking about motor barriers at the same time. Where are we at in terms of long-term planning and, you know, you know, are we gonna have to start looking at graders again possibly? Just so we're kinda have it in our head.
Next year budget time, what would budget for? Will we actually bidding a year from now? I mean, that's the plan.
Yeah, but budget next year to buy in twenty then?
Exactly.
So we're gonna go, what, full three again? Or three to three again?
Yeah.
Want to be a dismount with our handout, that's for sure.
Yeah, especially this coming session, we get that.
Yeah, I just, I'm wrapping my head around, you know, I don't, how old are those gear ones now? Those are the oldest ones?
Well, well, they're seven-year warranty will be going on, so.
What you got in that long already?
It's both time then.
Okay.
We just one other question, a short one. Kevin, we bought those pile trucks. There was money come from the state and designated that you had to buy machinery, right?
That was our own money, no.
What about there was some money that come from the state that we had to buy machinery?
No, they were giving us money, but they said, take the money we're giving you and fix your roads and take the money you were gonna use to fix your roads to buy machinery. Does that make sense? So that's what we did.
That was at some, at the same time, we're getting some of that oil money probably then.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, alright, thanks, Kevin. Steve?
My request is just that, uh, if I have extra funding in my account for the, end of this year, I would like to make a couple purchases if the funding's available. Uh, we're looking at body cameras for all our officers, which is, the estimate right now is about sixty-eight, fifty, something. That'll fit the whole apartment, so just under seven thousand. And then we need to replace a couple of, uh, our, uh, vests, bulletproof vests, uh, which we did secure a little bit of grant money, about eight hundred dollars worth, but it's gonna run about twenty-four hundred to do two of them. And then we'll be off to stuff, but of course, this is all, all according to what I'm working with Canyon and Lisa to make sure I have the funding in there before any of this transpires towards, but it's over the thousand, so.
Probably do it next month then, is what you think?
Well, vests, if I order them today, they won't be here till probably January anyway, but, so I mean, it's, we need, I'd like to get them ordered and hopefully utilize some of the funding this year if it's available.
Okay, discussion on that?
We need a motion, I suppose. I'll make it contention to fund you having funding in the budget. Please go ahead and do that. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, share housing to do body cameras and couple bulletproof vests, contention on funding at the end of the year. Further second. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. He said it was gonna take twelve seconds.
Pretty close, yeah.
Good job. Okay, done unfinished business then. None? New business?
Uh, the, uh, unfinished, would that be the regulatory legislation?
We have it under new business, meaning we haven't talked about it in, in a meeting yet, I guess. We could, would you like to handle it on the unfinished business?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, we're gonna move through these pretty quick, so. Earthcode Waters Convention, then we'll start with.
Uh, that is coming up, uh, next month, the first of the next month. Uh, what is it, the?
December fourth through the seventh.
Fourth through the seventh is the, uh, water convention. The award banquet is the evening of Thursday, the sixth.
Yes.
And from my understanding, our nominee that we nominated last year, Governor Dollarple for the Commodore Award, which is the highest award that they give, um, we resubmitted that and it sounds like they're gonna go ahead regardless if he can make it there or not. So we will be presenting, Ramsey County will be presenting a, an award to Governor Dollarple or designee that evening. So if, uh, if somebody wants to come down from Ramsey County to present with the chairman, Lloyd Bond or the chairman Brown by that time maybe, uh, our first meeting in December is at our reorganization. I won't be down there anyway, uh, for the joint board, who we have, uh, our December meeting is down there that Thursday at noon and then we also present our Water Stewardship Award, which will be going to Nelson County Water Resource Board for their Michigan spillway project.
That's on your.
Oh, my, yeah, you know.
To help that country.
Six years ago or so, we drove through there with the, uh, for one of our bus tours and we had to have a sheriff escort because it was a one-lane traffic through that area, um, and you couldn't meet another vehicle, especially with the bus. And now, like, we drove through it this year and the amount of water that they've been able to, uh, remove and the land that they've been able to reclaim is just substantial. It used to be twenty-two thousand acres of land, uh, underwater, you know, but before we started the wet cycle, it was less than three hundred acres. So there's a bunch of water over there.
It's an outstanding job.
But one of those projects that took a generation to complete. You know, there's a lot of permitting and, and issues and legalities and everything else that, that has to follow. Um, but it was finally up in operation and actually doing some good, so, uh, we really felt that that was well deserving of the Water Stewardship Award. They didn't out of.
Okay.
If anybody needs a room at the Ram Code, I'd suggest calling. Um, I do have, I may have one extra depending on what Nelson County would like because we generally get one for the, our award winner, uh, for that evening, but, uh, I'll have to see what your, your awards are gonna be.
Just for the information.
Yeah.
Who's kinda in charge of that order, Danny?
Yeah, he's the chairman of the Nelson County Water Stewardship.
I've seen him a couple times and he complimented a lot.
Yeah.
Putting the country back on the map.
Yeah.
It was a dead area.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good project.
It was a really good project, you know, there's water approaching on the city of Michigan. That was, that, that was a big concern and then all the different farmland. You can wait for it and the queues flew over there that just gobbled up thousands and thousands of acres and, and, you know, really that water could have come east into Stump Lake, but the cart period or thing, the fish period, so they're actually pumping it to the east and, uh, into the forest river system and that checked in and so that they had to work with Walsh County in order to get that in the amounts.
Yeah, it went pretty well with them and.
Yeah.
And, uh, but with a little planning, put back on the tax roll.
Yeah.
I mean, it's huge.
Yeah, they're, they're all wearing culverts now to, to try to get the water, more water into the, the enterprise drain system to, to pump it over because the culverts were so high. The roads were built up and the culverts were, as water went down, the culverts were onto the water, so.
There's one individual that two thousand acres back.
Yeah.
They owned.
Yeah.
But he couldn't use it. It was off the tax roll, which sure as hell wasn't doing him any good.
Right.
You know, but he's gotten that much back.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been a really good project over there for him.
That's not on the tax roll, so it's helping everybody.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, good project. Very good. Uh, move on to raffle permits for girls, doubles like girls hockey, um, international brotherhood of electrical workers and Lake Region search and rescue is on our desk. I'll move the room, I'll.
Sorry, can I?
Okay. Take them on there. A motion in a second to approve the three, uh, raffle permits. Further discussion.
Everything looking place, right, Danny?
Yes.
The one with the, the fair, the one, uh, search and rescue, I think that's the one that the car dropped here, guys. That's a good one.
Thank you, you're the same car guy.
Been using it for a while, I think. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Actually, I was just thinking of search and rescue. Do you know when they meet next time, Steve?
It'll be the, uh, it's usually the same night as your second meeting.
Oh, it is? Okay, yeah, that's right. I was just thinking about that the other day about.
The third Tuesday earlier.
Yeah, 'cause we had talked about, you know, way back when we did the search and rescue building, you know, they're always fundraising, fundraising, fundraising for continuing, uh, uh, you know, training and things like that and, you know, possibly maybe putting something in the budget at some point in time to help them so they can maybe can use that to offset the fact that they're using vacation time and everything to both better themselves and provide the data training, so I was just thinking about that, so that'd be something to consider. But that's way past now.
Do we not want them to come in or are we even at that?
But, well, do you have to?
Well, I remember back when we talked about it, Steve gave me, he mentioned that they, they would be open to that idea, so maybe we could go meet with them at some point, but bring it up and see if that would be something he.
Should they want to come to us and I reckon we'd do that.
Which would probably be easier than, than everybody. They can maybe, we'll, they're meeting back till.
I mean, that's, you know, obviously we're far past budgeting, but maybe for next year.
For next year, we can, we can look at, we can plan for as long as.
Absolutely. They work so hard on fundraising, you know, maybe we should, we'll help them all since they're under our review, so. Okay. Review our applications for court facilities improvement grants. It looks like they're gonna tint some windows upstairs. Yeah, there's two of them. I'm just looking at the first one. So one of them would be, uh, here in the courthouse, uh, tinting windows upstairs. So one of them would be uh, here in the courthouse, uh, tinting windows upstairs. It's a twenty-five percent cost share. The total price would be ninety-two forty and our cost share then would be twenty-three ten. And it would be court rooms as well as pretty much everything upstairs that has to do with any of the offices and things of that nature. And then the second one would be Ivan, uh, with the LEC. And would you like to speak to that, Rob? I guess we have some.
Well, and the reason that we're looking to install Ivan in the courtroom at the law enforcement center is obviously we cover for five different counties uh, and to try and help reduce the travel and risk that goes with that from moving inmates to and from the courthouses into outlying counties. Um, of course, that's not gonna eliminate it, but it'll significantly reduce that. Uh, as we've gone through to go through this process, we've identified that neither Toner County nor Benson County have Ivan currently in their court, uh, courtrooms, but they are also going to be applying for grants through the Court Facilities Improvement Grant to try and get that installed as well. And I think if we do it, you know, in conjunction with them, you know, I think it just enhances our opportunities to get that. One of the things too, though, is there is a twenty-five percent cost share, uh, that hasn't officially been addressed by our board, but it would be my expectation that the LEC would take on that twenty-five percent of that and then pay that out according to the cost share formula that they have in place, or however the board decides to go forward with that.
The one question I had in looking at it, and maybe I should know this, but if, if we have an Ivan system and, and they're supposed to have court in Toner County or Benson or whatever, they have to waive their rights to go to that facility, correct?
That's, there, I'm not sure there are specific steps that they have, would have to waive that, right?
There's rules that.
We have to allow them in, yeah, we have to allow them an in-person.
They absolutely can request to be in person, absolutely.
But, you know, it would be an option where we, we could use it then.
Uh, and additionally too, on the other side is if we have someone that's sitting in Grand Forks on Grand Forks uh, issues and we've got a Ramsey County warrant, Monday morning, they could maybe establish and do an Ivan hearing with them to prevent us from even having to go get them, or they could address their court issues. And vice versa, we have a role with someone for Bismarck where they could potentially do an Ivan hearing and then there wouldn't have to be any travel for the division to go down there after they complete their local stuff. And we are starting to see an increase in that part of this where Burley and Cass and some of the other counties are having Ivan hearings here because their inmate is here. And right now, we've been transporting them up to the courtroom, uh, for those other entities, but this would eliminate, this would help a little bit with that, but then they're starting to become more and more. Uh, we're probably doing one or two a month, maybe, right now, but if we had that, it would probably be an increase. They can do bond hearings, they can do uh, other things with it too as well, so.
Sounds like a good system.
Yeah, it's just.
It's, it's the evolving nature of, of uh, of the way it's going as far as saving some money.
Candy, do you want separate motions on those?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, well then I guess I'll, I'll make the motion to approve taking the courthouse with us for suing that firm.
Okay.
Second, uh, have we ever looked at doing the entire building as, as a cost-saving me- measure for energy? Oh, you did that, too. Well, in the, in the mornings, I'm sure the east side gets incredibly hot in the summer and I know the west side does. Uh, it gets incredibly hot in the summertime. And it's gonna reduce some of that air coming in. It may save some money in the air conditioning side of things, but yeah, that's, that'd be a good project for upstairs.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the first uh, uh, court improvement facilities grant for the windows upstairs, for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign? Motion carries. The only question I would have is, we have, we have a pot of money, correct? It's out of, this rule out of the building fund on that twenty-three ten, so it comes out of general bank.
Okay. Well, in the general.
But we've got twenty-three hundred bucks, this, this would be for next year, so.
Okay. One other comment on Ivan is Benson County brought this to our attention from the law enforcement center. They had an issue, would they have ten prisoners that day they had to try and work?
Yeah, and then they had one that ended up having a, yeah, a reaction, ended up hurting a part of their tur- territory room.
Yeah, so they, they were really pushing to get this done. And they're gonna do it on their end, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why it's needed.
So, uh, well, I guess what, what would your feeling be, Ed, on the, you don't, you don't think it's gonna be a problem with the LEC board getting a twenty-five percent match, it's just a matter of just having a chance to address the agents, you have that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Uh, would you, I guess my only question would be, would, would you like to make the motion contingent on the fact the LEC approves it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the LEC's court improvement grant contingent on the LEC providing a twenty-five percent match and then we're just the sponsoring agency, basically. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Nothing else on that, Rob?
No.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, discussion on properties, Akery, say, are you just gonna take a while?
Actually, no, I'm gonna withdraw that, I had to put that on there and then did a nineteen ninety map and saw the zoning code to change and, yeah, handled the issue.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, uh, we can't finish the Oprah thing in three minutes, I don't think, and the other one we probably can't either. We don't have anything else to talk about until nine o'clock. Okay, no, I'll take a little longer than that. Um, I guess we could probably do some of the portfolios stuff more real quick, just to get it out of the way. If anybody thinks they can accomplish their portfolio discussion in three minutes? Or we could just.
Three minutes, so you like.
Okay.
Talk about the law enforcement a lot, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
We've got the inspectors coming in on the twentieth of November of this month. So we anticipate we have to go, you know, lift it at that time. I've had a conversation with Lance Anderson down there and uh, strongly encouraged him to definitely looking to do, so, and um, uh, if we're not done yet, so.
And honestly, from my point of view, the order isn't, you know, while we, it, it needs to be lifted, that's not the issue for us, is having that restriction to house contract offenders. If they wanna maintain and keep the order going, I'm fine with that, I don't see that there's any need for that, but we need to get that restriction to house contract offenders lifted, and that's, that's our main goal.
So twenty if you will.
Yeah.
Twenty coming down there pretty quick in a couple weeks, so.
And so they, they had our, our monthly meeting of the law enforcement board, not invited, I understand, a lot we're here to, we had a meeting, and uh, thought of the board, so we had our back, had a lot.
No.
Hey, I have the email.
I'll do that.
But uh, I don't know that we're high anticipating here, they're coming, I guess, so.
Okay. The other question I would have on the LEC, I guess, we're up still here, did you guys address the, the camera? And how we're gonna, how the cost share is gonna work, I mean, where we at on that?
So the, the bid, the, the board accepted the bid and agreed that the LEC wanted to go and take on the loan for that two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Uh, they haven't decided yet how that's gonna be split up amongst the five entities and that's something that they said, well, we're gonna come to an agreement, so we will take care of it, they just want to get the ball moving on it.
Okay.
So we, we sent down a request for proposals for the interest rate on the loan and then at the next meeting, we'll be working on discussing how is, is that gonna be broken up?
Okay.
You know, who's gonna pay for what, and my initial recommendations to the board are gonna be to break it up five ways, which is gonna go to the four outlying counties and then the LEC would take the fifth chair, which then kind of puts some of it back on, you know, a little bit of that comes back to the Ramsey County and the city again, but at least it gets most of that out to those agencies and it isn't just totally split up amongst the six.
And at our last board meeting, we brought it up, visited about it and uh, quite a good reception, I felt, from other commissioners, you know, from the other counties. Mr. Steffen was uh, quite receptive to it and they're looking at probably the largest share.
Yeah.
By UC.
Yeah.
And Nelson was good and Eddie was actually good and we didn't really get much out of Commissioner Tooty.
No.
I think, I think it boiled on quite well, I, I didn't do it. I had a good feeling.
Yeah, they were receptive to paying their share of it, they, they understood and, and, you know, that they need to be investing into the facility too, even though they may not have ownership over it.
Oh yeah, and that's, I guess that's the whole point, is we're paying the line share since we own the facility, but it's basically, you're gonna benefit from the equipment as well, so there has to be some type of buy-in from them, so.
And actually, this commission should know that we're meeting with the Nelson County Commission today at eleven thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, from the LEC or just you and Rob?
Just Rob and me.
And it's in regards to the project and, and the share, the cost share of that.
Okay, so just kind of hammer some things out, so, okay, good deal. Okay. I don't think we have anything else on that, so it's nine o'clock. We will open the second hearing on the alcohol beverage ordinance, which I believe this coffee should be sitting on your desk. And we will turn it over to Akery to discuss what she found on the section fifteen, I believe, correct? Fourteen!
Section fourteen.
It turns into thirteen.
But first, I would just talk about section fifteen, which is alcohol server training and I think Alan is here, so if I miss state anything, please, please interrupt. Um, what I did on, it starts on page nine, uh, section twenty, which would become section nineteen. Uh, I put a provision in subsection A that allowed for the sheriff's department and or its designee to look at the other trainings that people maybe migrate into our county with, um, on whether or not that complies with this. Also, on page ten, which would be number three, pay all fees if applicable. I added that there, I don't know if you have that copied, that kind of was a last minute thing last night when Ms. Bonnie got ahold of me. Uh, it had read pay all fees incurred to provide responsible alcohol server training. The Ms. Bonnie asked that I put if applicable because currently there is no cost for that, so that's why I added that language.
Just, just do it for the future.
Yep. Um, and that's really all the changes on section nineteen, which would deal with responsible alcohol server training. The other um, area which starts on page seven, which is section fourteen entertainment, which would become section thirteen entertainment. Um, as, as it was written, ordinance, really, there should not have been any live performances involving um, removal of clothing. And that was taking place, um, certainly at Wallace Roadhouse, I believe they have entertainers on premises that are topless entertainers. Um, so I reviewed the video from the twenty sixteen hearings that took place on the adoption of the ordinance and there had been some reference in that ordinance to the viewing of nipples. Um, and that was what was stricken out of there and then the ordinance itself was adopted with that being stricken, which still prohibited live entertainment with removal of clothing. Um, so the commission's decision is whether or not they are going to prohibit live entertainment with removal of clothing or they're not. And so the commissioners would have to make that decision. Um, the city of Devil's Lake, I pulled their ordinance, um, had some conversation with Mr. Owens over at Trainers, because from a review of the city code, it looks like the acts that are prohibited on a licensed premises, really, um, whoever the licensia shall not permit any coercing, boisterous conduct or behavior. So it's um, fairly vague.
That's pretty subjective.
It's fairly vague and fairly wide open.
What is boisterous big?
Well, that depends on who you're asking that question to. Um, state law, of course, prohibits um, the showing of the performance of acts or simulated acts of sexual intercourse, masturbation. Those prohibitions that are written into fourteen is, is addressed in state law. Um, some other things to think about because I looked at a variety of ordinances both in the state of North Dakota and outside of the state of North Dakota and when there is live entertainment that involves the removal of at least um, partial clothing. Things that are looked at licensed, um, restricted are the age of the entertainer, of course, being twenty-one. Whether or not the commission wants to look at background checks of an entertainer. Uh, whether or not the commission wants to look at an entertainment license for somebody who's going to come in and be an entertainer. Um, lap dancing, uh, if that's allowable, distance between an entertainer and patron. Alcohol consumption by an entertainer. Uh, location of alcohol serving in the establishment and whether or not there wants to be consideration by the commission of a, an additional class of a license um, for alcohol licensing, uh, limiting the amount of establishments. So those are all things that have been regulated in different locations.
What would you suggest we do to generalize this?
Well, right now it is fairly.
Generalized.
Generalized, uh, except of course for the displaying of the buttocks, anus or genital. That's restricted in there, so full nudity is restricted. Mr. Slominski sent me my email this morning, um, kind of a code of conduct that I believe they either do or are going to begin using with their dancers that have some restrictions, I did make copies for the commission, if the commission is interested in reviewing that. Um, it's their own kind of code of conduct that they have with their dancers there, entertainers there.
This policy's gotta fit all, you know?
Correct.
New establishment comes in, we gotta be able to cover what they're doing.
Yeah, commission has to decide if you'll.
But the city just pretty much leaves it the way it's been for years, is that correct?
Nineteen eighty-eight, it looks like. Nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen eighty-eight, so.
So they're just leaving it like that?
That's, that's their restriction right now.
It's not as bad as we were, where we updated it, so.
I, I believe when we, last time we addressed this, that's.
Well, last time.
Essentially, that the Ramsey County Commission was, went on, went along with what the city was doing first.
Well, I, I.
We just changed, I mean, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, I looked at, I looked at the minutes and I remem, I'm trying to, yeah, well, I'm trying to recall this, the discussion, and if I remember the discussion right, it basically came down to, at, at that point, Lonnie basically said that like the section A under, or, or letter A under section thirteen was the stuff that was in state statute.
Correct.
And we basically made the decision to say we are okay with allowing topless dancing, but we wanted the prohibitions in state law, essentially is what it came down to. So the understanding I had when we passed it was we were basically striking the beginning section as it sits in front of us now, allowing that, but with those provisions saying that we won't allow it with the state law. What, you know, what the state law basically sets. So we weren't gonna go on, but we were going to allow that one variation, basically. And that's, that was my recollection of the discussion, I guess.
Um, yeah, the, the motion to strike was the nipple portion, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, so we just essentially, how I would understand it, we screwed up our motion, basically. Is what it came down to, at least in my mind. Uh, and the other thing would be, I, I remember vaguely the discussion going down to D talking about, you know, making sure that we have considerations to make sure that, you know, there's no human trafficking, there's no, making sure that the people that are the entertainers, that they're under their own will, they're doing, there's also some kind of check system with the sheriff's department, if they eat it too, type of thing. That was the only concern I remember visiting about. But that's a lot, I mean, a lot of things have happened, my mind only holds so much.
I'm not holding that much, I don't think. Steve, what do you think? I mean, help us out, what's the best way to enforce it or kind of?
Kind of have to rely on the business owners to do most of their, most of the, uh, their code of conduct and make sure that they're following the rules because, you know, if we do a spot check, uh, of course, things are, you know, not easily available or, or easy to detect, especially if they're doing dancing, like a lap dance in a private room or something of that nature, so. You know, it's really difficult for us unless we do an undercover kind of a, uh, sting or a undercover uh, compliance check, if you wanna call it that, not necessarily a sting, but a compliance check. Uh, would something we would have to look at as far as see where they're following the actual policy that they are required to be.
So, I mean, I, I was on the commission the last time it was discussed, but one of the things that comes to mind for me, uh, specifically with respect to human trafficking. specifically with respect to human trafficking and potential prostitution, and I don't know whether or not that's a problem. I don't know that I think we need to have a licensing process because I know that these dancers are coming and going fairly regularly. One of the things that I think might have some value would be to have a registry of the dancers that have come through.
Through our office.
Yeah, so, so that would have to be filed with your office. And the reason for that would be to see, you know, over time, if there are correlations between vi- you know, violations in other areas versus, you know, who's coming in, right? So at least the county commission in the future, if this comes up again, will have more knowledge on what's really going on. Other than that, I don't know.
We have not gotten a lot of complaints. A year, maybe two years ago, we had some indications that there might be some prostitution going on behind the scenes. Maybe not necessarily in ballroom in the club, but, you know, outside of that venue, they were, and some other things. But of course, we haven't, there's no proof of any of that. I did go and talk to the manager at the time to alert them that, hey, you know, we've heard it's going on, you know, help us. And there's a lot of this that we rely on the manager.
I just think going forward, you will too.
Yeah.
But I do think, I do think it would be valuable to have an internal sort of registry database of
I got no problem with that. You know, we could do background, but we could do checks on them as much as we can. Of course, if they're coming in from other states, that gets to be rather limited at times too. But, you know, because we do require confidential information in order to do a valid, and we're gonna need a birth date, we're gonna need a, you know, full name in order to do a, a check to determine if there's a trafficking issue going on, or if there's a missing, you know, something of that nature. So that's something we have to consider legally, as if, do they have to provide that or not?
Well, I think that
I think we'd require that, but
That it could be required, and that would be
Yes, but that's something we would need to do adequate. You know, just giving us a name doesn't, you know, we're gonna have to have some form of a, I don't know if they got a copy of their ID, or I don't know.
I can, I can have that stuff first. If we do, every, every one of our dancers are required to have a, you know, valid ID, usually a driver's license or whatever, but they, they can't if they don't, can we photocopy all those? And that, you mentioned this time, because I, that's a great idea if there's ever somebody that, you know, there was mention of background checks, and I can start thinking, well, I guess kind of in depth, but if, if they had the information, they're ready, and if they had heard something or whatever, we have all of that information for everyone who's ever been there. And then also on the, on the end of, you know, the topic of prostitution and these things, anybody in this town that's close to us or not, that end of things, I don't know what Vargo's policy more or less is. Whatever happens outside of Vargo's is their business. As far as I'm concerned, that's not, that, we've had a couple, every once in a while you start doing this little buzz of prostitution around us. And then usually we can trace the facts to a certain individual, and if they have that, if they wanted to work outside of our building, they're not welcome out there. I just, that's something that I just, that we will not have. It's already in our code of conduct. All of it just, it can't, that, that can't exist, we don't need it.
Just to follow up, all the allegations were not within the confines of the building. They were going to another location on their own, so it really wasn't a They were there to be dancers, but all the conduct that we heard was happening at another location. So it wasn't, it wasn't Billy, or they were
Right, and with that being said, I'd, I still, if it's somebody that came to this town because they came to work for us, the easiest way to make sure that they're not there again is that they're not in their class. I just, you know, that's, that's what I've always had, that is, we don't have it. Every one of our people knows, people, girls, I'm fairly strict with them, even going to have much with one of their friends that they happen to be consorted with at least, because I just, I don't want to have it, that's what, that determines everything.
Well, with Lucas's comment about the register now, we should put that into policy. I think we should table this in our state's attorney's act with the, to put together throughout.
And, and with that registration, is the commission interested in having a background check conducted by the sheriff's department? Or is that above beyond?
Oh, I don't think we need to do that.
I would say they would either, if requested or if we were to decide, you know, give us an option to, you know, if we, something picks up, we can actually run one without interrupt, or without being
Yeah, bas- basically what Lucas is saying is we should have some type of a registry so that if we do have a concern or some type of a question, or some type of an inkling that we can go in and do a check if necessary, with, with the help from the
If they're photographing all identification, that should be relatively easy, but just to maintain their records. You know, if we hear somebody say, hey, I heard John Jane Doe, let me have her information so we could or him, and then we could do, conduct some kind of, sort of, a check on it.
Okay.
If required.
So just, just to clarify, are you in favor of enforcing upon the business that they maintained, or like a registry? Or, or is it better to have it in the, in the, within the confines of, of the county?
I think the less hands you have on it, the better, I mean
Let the, let the owner run it.
Well, I think the business should be
But we have the prerogative to go in and look at it.
I think we
We don't wanna have a registry.
I don't think we need to keep it on. But, but we should reserve the right, we can, we can walk in the doors and say, hey, I want back, I want the last three weeks of answers, I wanna see what they are.
Well, it's, it's, it's
Is that
Yeah, that probably makes sense.
It's no different than what we're attempting to do, well, it's different, but no different essentially than what we're attempting to do with the server training, where we're basically putting it on the owner to have a compilation and make sure all the papers are in order so we can spot check then if we want to.
Exactly.
It's the same kind of concept. It's all in-house done, and we can come in anytime and say, hey, we wanna spot check. Okay, that sounds reasonable. That way it doesn't add to your workload.
Yeah, that's fine.
It puts it on, back on the owner to make sure that things are being done correctly, and we can always check if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna make sure that you feel
No, I'm fine, whatever, yeah.
Do you have the prerogative to use it if you want?
Yes.
We're not
Which we kinda do now anyway, I mean, if I walk in, I
Well, I don't
But it depends on, you know.
It's good to have it in.
I can walk in there anytime and request it now anyway by state law, so it's just a matter of updating our policy.
The best way of having our policy to start with
Yeah, and if they're aware of it, I guess.
Regular businesses come in, we gotta have an ability to say, well, you gotta follow the policy.
Because that way, if you have new business coming in, it's already in our policy, we don't have to go on, tell me, we have the rights, we're gonna do it, you know, they already know. And I think that's fair, that the owners know ahead of time what they're requiring, unless it's banker.
I may even have to table it, so it's very counterproductive for it to be done here.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna table the, the complete ordinance and, and allow Carrie to make the changes off the discussion criteria? Okay.
I mean, it's your only right way to do it.
Would it be possible to approve the alcohol server training portion, is that, or do we wanna just prove as a whole?
Well, I think, since it's in there with the change, I guess my inclination would be we're gonna have to approve the ordinance as a whole after we close the hearing completely.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to
Yeah, I, I guess at this, yes, Steve.
And just for the commission, we're doing everything the same as with Liz Bonney. So Ramsey County should be all one hundred percent identical. Because we are the same as the police department and city that was like this doing, so it should all be a hundred percent the same. So company-wide should be, the, the class and everything will be the exact same.
Yep, and we got seventy-five days in there, which matches the city, and then are we also going to have one of our deputies or a couple of them train up too?
Yes.
So we have additional resources, but fantastic, and that's kind of what we had talked about at the
And we're working with Liz on that already, so we'll have at least one, if not two, perfect.
So do you have enough, enough guidance to where we're going? Okay, we're, we're pretty good with the language, just a matter of adding in some additional stuff on that letter D then. Okay, so the motion is on the floor, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second to have guidance to the state's attorney to come back with a, a change for that letter D and to table the discussion on the, and I guess it would be to close the hearing at this point then, and reschedule, or to put it on the next meeting, then I would ask.
Whenever she has it done.
Yeah, whenever she has it done. Well, we would have to, a lot of the setting hearing, yeah.
I, we would expect it to be done
Next meeting, yes.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, would you add that to your motion?
Yeah, is that far enough out? Is it, hearing dates are two weeks in advance?
Well, technically, we're not closing the hearing right now.
Correct.
We're gonna leave the hearing open and just extend it to the next meeting at six o'clock again, like we have.
We've done one session now.
Okay, got that down? A little
I'm right past
Little convoluted what we got there. Okay, so we have a motion in a second to table it with the changes and have the hearing again open at six o'clock then. There are nice meetings, really good discussion.
Can we change that time?
Okay, what time would you like? Do it greater weight.
With the foreclosure, hearing is the next.
About thirty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Knock it out right away, and then the foreclosure should be at six.
Foreclosure is at five forty-five.
Oh.
So
There it goes, six.
Six fifteen.
Yeah, six fifteen, whatever, whatever works for you, doesn't matter.
There you are.
Okay, so that's the motion. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is, I guess, closed for today and tabled until next meeting. Okay, thanks for everyone's input. Fantastic. Okay, then we're going to close this up then. And move back to our regular agenda. And we'll go down to discussion on the opioid lawsuit. And I see Mr. Olson is here, who's with the attorneys that we have better presentation from, a couple times now. I don't know where we should start with the discussion, other than to say, what are, what are the wishes of the commission, I guess, at this point? We, we've had the, you know, a few of us have had some presentation twice now. The city has gone on board and signed on with the group that we have had presentations from, as well as, what, Burley County, Grand Forks, City?
Burley County, Grand Forks County, Grand Forks City, I believe, is, is signing on. Walsh County has signed on, and the city of Devil's Lake.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we sign on with that contract with the law firms that Mr. Olson represents.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second to, I guess, would you, would you like to make the motion to sign on or to, to essentially negotiate the contract with them? Because do we wanna go with the standard rate that they're putting out, or do we wanna, or allow Carrie to make some changes or to overlook the contract before we sign it, basically?
I'd just say go ahead and sign the contract.
Okay.
You know, one or two percent of whatever is gonna be, it's not gonna be significant.
Okay.
And, and whatever we get is gonna be more than what we have today.
Yeah.
So, that, that would be my, my motion, is that we go ahead and sign the contract as presented, if it's acceptable with
Yeah, pending any, any changes that maybe the state's attorney sees. Okay, okay, we're okay with that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to sign on with, and I can't even remember all the law firms' names.
Ferrer, Perori, and
It's on my board.
Just as a quick question, Jeff, I mean, do you feel that we lose anything by trying to negotiate on our behalf?
Other than time?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not. But I, I think we've, you know, we're not gonna gain anything by it, or significant anything by negotiating. You know, I don't know if the number's gonna be big enough to, to make a big difference. And like I said, it's, whatever we get is gonna be more than what we have today. One or two percent or whatever that the law firm would be willing to negotiate down and, or compromise on, I don't know if that'd be as significant.
We would probably Well, I mean, one, one percent of a million dollars is ten thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, so I mean, to me, that's not necessarily insignificant. And that's why, at least in my mind, I think it would be beneficial to at least see what terms they'd be willing to work with us on.
Is that Mr. Olson? As other cities and valleys?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I do know from experience that they will, they will not go lower than the twenty-five percent fee, but they will negotiate a graduated fee schedule at certain recovery levels. In other words, as you recover a bigger settlement, the percentage will go down. They will negotiate that.
Yeah, and, and the reason that, that I think that that would be valuable to negotiate is because we're going to, as a, as a gross amount, receive less than, say, you know, of Burley County. And so if our, if our scale has the same gross amounts going up, where we get those same breaks, that means that Ramsey will get, on the average, a, a, a higher fee to the, to the law firm than, say, Burley would. That's my concern.
Well, your, your recovery will be based on your actual damages, not population.
And, and at this point in time, we, I mean, we could just ballpark what we think our actual damages are gonna be. Basically, and I, I guess I could, I can, you know, the contract that we have in front of us, assuming it would be the same, and I would assume it would be, is twenty-five percent of annual recovery up to two and a half million, then twenty percent from two and a half to three and a half, fifteen percent from three and a half to four and a half, ten percent from four and a half to five and a half, and five percent over anything over five and a half. I would make the, I mean, and it's just an assumption, but I don't think we're even gonna get out of that first bracket. It would be, my guess, maybe into the second one.
We don't know.
We don't know, but
We're guessing.
Yeah, we're guessing.
Let's try to find some facts. And one fact that I remember from the presentation was that Ramsey County sold more opioids than any other county in North Dakota, is that true?
Per capita.
Per capita, excuse me, I didn't get that in there.
I believe that is true. I haven't looked at every other county, but
I see their chart, I can't find it.
Yeah, the, the number, the number that I saw, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, for every one hundred residents
There's a hundred and twenty point some prescriptions written.
Right.
Yeah, and Ramsey was the highest in North Dakota.
I can't believe Ramsey isn't gonna be your lead county in North Dakota, per capita.
Could very well be. It's possible that you could be recovering a bigger settlement than Burley or any other county. But as you said, we don't know for sure.
We don't know how this is gonna roll out, we're gonna have a chance.
Well, we're not gonna, yeah, well, we, we're not gonna know where the, where the, where the damages are until we sit, get to the discovery phase of actually sitting down and putting numbers together. And, and, you know, we have a ballpark idea, we know what our jail costs have escalated in the past so many years, and those will all be included, I'm sure, and, you know, state's attorney's costs, sheriff's costs. I mean, it could get, it could be a decent cover when it's all saved up, so.
We're putting the people of Ramsey County's fate in the law firm here, and I have no problem on Jeff's, Mark's motion, so.
Well, I will say, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that I really believe these guys are the best in the business. This is what they do, pharmaceutical litigation. And this is not a time for the county to be shopping for the blue light special. It's still an issue.
And I, I'm comfortable with this law firm, and I think they're, they're gonna do the best job we can get done. It's just a matter of, you know, the question of, do we wanna angle over a percent or two?
Well, I mean, and, and at least in my view, right, I mean, I'm, I'm absolutely with the other commissioners that this is worth pursuing, and that, you know, relatively speaking, sooner the better. But if I, if I put on my hat as a taxpayer of this county and somebody who wants to see that we're, we're utilizing all of our resources as wisely as possible, to me, having a, a, a short time period to try to negotiate a better rate, I, I don't know that I see any downside to that, and I do see potential upside.
There, there's no, there's zero cost to taxpayers. There's zero cost to taxpayers right now for entering into this litigation.
Right, but potential, but potential, you know, damages returned to this county could be, you know, will be, will be less.
Right. Right now, the a hundred percent of the opioid problem is coming out of the taxpayer's problem. So whatever we get back is gonna reduce that hundred percent to whatever.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, Commissioner, it's not that I'm saying that we don't pursue this. You know, if, if this goes to a vote now, I'll still vote in favor of it. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, if, if you're looking at it like a, you know, a seven percent return versus a five percent return is both better than a zero percent return, but if both options could be on the table, then why wouldn't you choose, you know, what rational act or wouldn't say, I'll take the seven percent? That's all that I'm saying.
Okay. The motion is on the table to accept the contract with percentages as are, and allow the state's attorney to make sure that there's no provisions in there that we have a problem with. And then bring it back for the next meeting, I would guess, for signature. Okay? Really good discussion on that.
So we're not signing that today?
Well, I don't think we can until we allow Carrie to at least look over the contract, make sure there's nothing in there that's
Oh, I thought that's something that she's already got.
Yeah, I didn't have an issue with it.
Oh, you have an issue, okay, okay, I didn't know she looked over it yet, okay. Okay, so then we're basically Okay, so then we're basically saying we're going to sign it.
Right, yeah.
That's your motion, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I thought that you were, that she hadn't looked over it yet, so, you have no problem with it?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, further discussion. So, then let's, roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for coming on, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and going forward, rest assured that I will be available to provide any assistance you might need. I'm confident that you will have a good experience working with these firms, but if you do have a question or concern, you've got a local guy right here in the state to rattle their cage.
Thank you so much.
And they're very good about communicating with me.
And I would assume that Carrie will be in contact with them, assert working on.
Carrie, do you have Matt Daniels' contact information?
Oh, I bet I do.
Okay, been there someplace.
That whole book of it.
There you go. Okay. And I would assume that, I don't know, at this point in time, if they've talked with the city on when they're going to start doing discovery and all that, but that'll be something, that'll be work through the state's attorney.
Yeah.
All the different department heads, that'll be part of it, and I'm sure Rob will be on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, last thing on the portfolios would just be a quick discussion, hopefully, on human resource hours. All of it, simply because I put it on. Right now, we're at twelve hours, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is we did budget up to twenty, and Crystal has the opportunity to do some online teaching for Botno at the college there. So she just wanted to make sure she knew how many hours we were going to lock in for next year, so that she knew how much teaching she could do, because obviously she, the art, her first priority. But she had the opportunity, she wanted to make sure that we had locked in basically where we wanted to go for hours. So, in visiting with her and seeing, oh, every time I'm in here, she's visiting with somebody, it's, she's pretty busy. I don't know if we necessarily did go to twenty, but just wanted to bring it up, so. You know, if we went to sixteen, it would be two full days.
Were we at twelve?
We're at twelve right now, day and a half. If we went to sixteen, it would be two full days.
And we have all, what, seventy employees, sixty-five?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine.
Yeah, I remember I asked a question to you, how many employees she had at Mayville, and it was three twenty-five. And she was full-time. She's here for twelve hours a week, and she's got sixty-nine employees. That's a pretty good ratio then. I don't think we need to have any more. That's my opinion. And I'm using that as an example. Three twenty-five, and she was there full-time? And we're going to put her up to maybe twenty, half-time?
I don't think twenty is necessary, no.
So, you're looking for, like, the next year?
Yeah, just, yeah, just where are we going to be at in terms of, I mean, we can always make a change later. But she just wants to know how many hours we're going to be expecting, so that she knows what she can do outside of this, basically, as a commitment, is what it comes down to.
How long has she been here?
Well, gosh, we've had her for.
April?
It was before the beginning of last year, it was about a year now. We had her on by November or October of November of last year, she did it about a year.
About a year, no?
Yeah, I think so.
From what I've heard from talking to employees at the county, they really do value having access to Crystal, and I don't know that I think it would be a bad idea to go up to sixteen hours, certainly full, two full days. I don't think that it's necessary to go up to twenty either, but I think that sixteen is not a bad.
Yeah, that's why I brought this up for discussion, just to, you know, she just wants some certainty about what's going to, and she said she, you know, if she sticks to twelve, that's fine too, it's just a matter, she wants to know what the commitment is.
You know, we appreciate her as a commission, that she's taking it as part-time, you know. If we have to go find a full-time HR person, I put twelve hours, that's not.
Well, even if you contract, even if you contract with somebody, I don't think we'd be getting any better pay for a buck than we're getting now by law. I mean, we're getting a pretty good deal.
That wasn't.
Even at sixteen or twenty hours like that, personally, but.
Like I said, I'm using what you did in Mayville, three hundred and twenty-five employees, because I asked the question. I couldn't believe, you know, they had one HR person for three hundred and twenty-five employees, and they must have gone by it.
Well, some of it, I think, comes down to too, is regardless if you have seven-year employees or three hundred and twenty-five, the policies that need to be in place.
Are the same.
Are the same, you know, but, but, yeah, yeah, but talking with people and stuff, yeah, three twenty-five is.
I said, two days, so, once they're in place, can't imagine we're going to have to change them for a few years, you know.
Hopefully.
Whatever the legislature needs.
Then we got to change the stuff.
We're going to go down, so.
I'd be fine with sixteen too, I know she's busy, every time I go down that hallway, there's somebody in her office, so.
Twenty, twenty's key, and then it's, then it's.
Yeah.
Twenty's what we have budgeted, and I don't think anybody's asking for that right now. But sixteen would be, I think, reasonable.
I'd make that motion.
You'll allow that?
I'd like to say, see her stay at twelve. I really would. I think she, she's getting her job done at twelve.
She's busy.
Yeah, she's busy, but.
Plus, plus department, she, we meet for once, once a month.
For. All of the assessment, it would be nice to know she's there that whole day. If something comes up in the morning and I get busy, I mean, it's not, it's not, whether you guys decide if she's needed or not, but it's nice to have that whole day.
Monday, she's there all day and half-day.
No, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesdays, she's, Tuesdays, she's here all day, and then Wednesday, it's from nine to one.
Yeah, and you make the change to go nine to one, simply because it worked better for her, but also it was nice having that noon to one spot where she'd be here. You know, because then if somebody needs to come over when they're not on work and stuff, I think it's worked pretty well that way, so. So, I guess.
My motion is on the floor.
Okay, you did make a motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, so there's a motion to move from twelve to sixteen hours, okay?
And I second that.
And you have a second, okay, further discussion.
How often do you use her, Kevin?
Oh, maybe once every two weeks, a couple of times a month.
Probably not that much, but there are times when I have questions. We're running into some situations now with some medical issues that we're dealing with, so. Ron, if he has a post in place, that might be a good person to ask.
Yeah, and I know Rob visits with her quite often. Because, you know, she has a fairly large staff, and there's always FMLA issues and, and, you know, all kinds of things like that. So, I come in, when it's Tuesday or Wednesday, she seems to always be busy with somebody in her office or working on something, so. Yeah, it's just, and I think, you know, I guess, coming from the department heads and visiting with them, the department head meetings have been well received, I think, in terms of keeping up to date and input back and forth about what's going on and, you know, learning and updating policies and what I've been told, so.
We've had to make a lot of changes.
Yeah, and it's a constantly evolving thing, too, so. Okay.
I'll repeat myself, I hope she's watching out for the best interest of the commission, and that's what we ask in an interview. And, you know, we haven't seen her now for a while, the commission meeting, and I expect to see her once a month. And I wanted to watch out for the best interest of the commission, the people of Ramsey County. You know, the employees are fine, we want to take care of them, but we need to watch out for the best interest of Ramsey County. So, we need her in front of us, and if just four hours will get her in front of us once a month, I think. And we asked that when we hired her.
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, well, and if that's an expectation, I guess I didn't catch that, I can.
Please, every other law.
Yeah, I could be, I don't think that's a problem with that she would come and visit with us, it's just a matter of, it hasn't been something we've regularly scheduled, so.
We want her to watch out for the best interest of Ramsey County.
Yeah, and I guess I've been.
I can tell you from a training I attended that she did yesterday, I think it was, it certainly was watching out for the best interest of the county.
Thank you. Good to hear that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've tried my, and I wasn't able to make yesterday because I had a Florida Devils Lake meeting, but I've tried my best to get to as many department head meetings as I can, and I've been, I visit with her probably every other week to see what's going on, and there's always something. So I try to stay as informed as I can, being, I oversee her, and I've been nothing but pleased, I guess.
One other thing I should say publicly is I hope the employees understand what the commission has done here, has given them somebody that they can vent to. And I hope the employees understand that and are thankful for it, because there are a whole lot of school districts, a whole lot of other counties that aren't using an HR person, so.
And they should be.
They probably should be. If you want to look into the future, yes, I would agree with you, Jeff. But you got to get somebody that's going to watch out for the best interest of the box, I guess I should say.
Like Carrie said, you know, I think Crystal's doing that.
Thank you.
And I think that she has the best interest of, of not only the commission, but the citizens of Ramsey County in mind, and she's out there protecting what's being done here within the building and outside with our employees and different things like that. So, I think she's got the best interest in mind, and so I think sixteen hours is, is a really inexpensive insurance policy.
There we go. I mean, I just, I think, yeah, I think that it's exactly right. I mean, it's like, it's all on fire suppressant, right? At least you don't have to put out a fire that's already burning.
And I'll bring up with her that we'd like to have her here, like you said, maybe every other month, that's what we begin, yeah, would be reasonable, and that's my fault, I haven't conveyed to her that we expect.
Any questions you can ask.
That would be huge to have her here.
Yeah.
Our former one, we'd never heard of until we had disasters.
Yeah, and in all honesty, I'll take blame for that, because I haven't conveyed to her that that's what our.
Well, I'll be on board with sixteen hours, as long as we get some reports of what's going on.
And I'll tell her that we want, we'd like to have that every other month or whatever, so, okay.
And one other thing I want to add is, taking too long, but we could hire an administrator, and it'd be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm not sure if that would cover it. And he could take care of, or she could take care of our HR problems, you know. So we're kind of getting a deal.
We're getting a deal.
And hopefully she can take care of our HR problems, you know, some counties have administrators.
I think we're getting a deal from the fact that we have somebody that has experience when they came in through the door, a lot of it.
Three hundred and twenty-five employees, that's what I do.
She's been there for a few years. Okay, so the motion is to move from twelve to sixteen hours and keep it at that for the foreseeable future. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, Carrie, you don't get to vote.
No, I'm not voting, I'm not voting.
She's not me to say that, she helps me out.
You can take mine, I'm a, you go right ahead and take it.
No, I have enough.
I could have been home right now, moving snow or something. Okay, that's everything on the agenda. Report on portfolios, Ed, pretty much touched on LAC, Lucas?
I guess they made me president to Dakota Prairie, the board there, so, we'll be doing some more stuff on that. My term as president of the library is over starting next week. I don't know if they'll renominate me, but I figured I'd let you all know that I might be a new president for the board. And to give you an update on the Library Garden, which of course is still privately funded, so it's not like it's anything that the county's paying for, but I figure it's even interesting. There's about fifteen thousand dollars of the original ninety-six thousand that we have left to raise, and we feel comfortable that we're going to be able to continue fundraising throughout the rest of the winter to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I'm hoping that both the mayor of Devils Lake and the chairman of this board, at the very least, will be there to cut that ribbon.
When's this?
It'll be next, right, we have, we have.
Yeah, I would assume we're not going to cut a ribbon.
Yeah, do you want to go right now?
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty degrees. So that's, that's what's going on with that. The other thing is, the Heritage Center director took another job, the Chamber of Commerce. And so, as of right now, we have an interim acting director who is, I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about him. The rest of the board has, I was gone for that meeting. The rest of the board seems to feel that he can fulfill the duties in an interim capacity, and we also have, from my understanding, though it'll have to be discussed at the next meeting, a very qualified applicant to be the director, so. Just to let you all know about that.
What do we pay him, John?
That salary, I think the last time around paid fifteen thousand, fifteen or twenty thousand.
For the year?
Yeah.
Full-time?
Well, the way it was working was that Kelly Swanset was subsidizing the rest as a, you know, going and working as an officer.
But that was the salary for the person who was supposed to be director? The one you can't hang on to, but.
When the place is broke, can't, can't grab cattle back.
I'll be better.
But that's, that's your part-time wage, that's not what we were, that's not what they were paying the director back a couple of years back. A full-time director. Right, I mean, I think, I think if you were to hire a full-time director, you'd probably need to pay him thirty thousand at least. I think we're even higher than that. I think, I think the direction that it'll go, hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be good in it. And it's too bad that we had to see talent go another direction, but I understand how it happened and why, so.
On law.
I do understand that from what I heard is that you're looking at bringing some of the maritime museum over there for display.
Yeah, so I mean, we're pursuing closer, closer relations with them, and I think that that's going to go really well. It's been a very productive conversation so far. And I know that, and again, some of this stuff has been a little bit choppy now that we've had a director leave, but now that the director of the library is on the board, I know that stronger relations between the library and the Heritage Center have been pursued, and there was talk at one point, again, that got tabled, of having a roving exhibit from the Heritage Center at the library, in the Heritage Room of the library, which I thought would be a very nice touch. So there are good things that are, that are happening, it's just, you know, as with everything, you're flying by the sea, you pass more than you want to.
With, with no admission fees for the Heritage Center, what's your revenue base? How are you generating revenue?
So it's, it's grant funding, funding through the city, funding through the county.
Okay.
And then private donations. When we, the rationale for why we did away with admission fees was when we added it up, that was producing, I think, twelve or fifteen hundred dollars a year, and we were turning away more than half the people that wanted to come.
Sure.
So, at least in my mind, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's over.
Yeah, Jeff?
I don't know a lot. We haven't met with the chamber yet this chief month, Monday, is it?
Not this coming Monday, that would be Veterans Day, it would be the next Monday after that.
Oh, they had their annual meeting, the seventeenth, that was at the college, well-attended, I thought, and, oh yeah, it was good, and. I think Suzie, you know, doing good with all that kind of.
Can I add just one thing?
Light access and shutdown for the follow-up.
I just wanted to say, I want to say thank you, response, I haven't been here, but I want to say thank you to all of you as a commission for backing the home rule. I guess there was a couple, maybe just one that didn't, but I want to thank you, I think it went really well. I know the vote failed, but I am feeling really proud about being on the committee and serving on that. It did go to a vote, I think it's the first of the three that actually went to the voting people. So I just wanted to say thank you from the committee, from myself, the chamber, and to you, the commission, that voted it to go through. I think you should feel good about it. The numbers didn't quite get there, but they're pretty close, so.
What do we got to do now, Paula?
Well, yeah, very, yeah.
Well, and on Election Day, it passed. The votes on Election Day, it passed, it was the write-ins that came in two weeks before that sunk it. I think we'd add another, another week.
That's election time too, two weeks before, so.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, I mean.
So I think it says a lot about the Home Rule Act that we wrote. I think we did a really good job, I'm proud of it, I'm proud of the committee. Going forward, Ed, I'm not quite sure, I guess the committee's dissolved, so we, as the committee, no longer are seated, so.
Oh, you're up. Can we run the vote again, the same way, or do we have to change that?
We don't have to. So my understanding through century code is we have to empower a charter committee again. That charter committee can be, you know, we.
Meet one time.
One time and say we want to do the same charter.
That you could do.
Yeah.
I would assume you could, but I think the best thing now is, you know, as a commission, talk with members of the community and see what they like and what they didn't like.
What did we do wrong? I think, I don't think we did it. I think, I don't think we did anything wrong as a committee or as a commission. But I think maybe we didn't get the word out there as well as we should have. Listening to some things in the community, education might have not been as done as well as we predicted. But I am still feeling really proud about the fact, it got to the point, it did, we got, as you said, you know, less than one percent. So something is going right, and so I think you should feel really proud about what you've done, too.
I agree with you.
So I just wanna say thank you.
Yeah, I'm not one to sit still, I'm just, we're gonna go, go again.
Great, I appreciate that.
But, but yeah, thank you and Suzie and the others that served in that committee that put a lot of time and effort into it. You know, came up with a document that I felt comfortable voting on to put forth on the ballot. And so, you know, the hats off to you guys, a lot of, a lot of hard work.
Yeah, it was, it was really an honor to, to, to be a part of that. And I would just say that, you know, the sort of the universal thing, and Paula already touched on it, is anybody and everybody that actually got an explanation of what Home Rule was said, wow, that makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, if you pursue it again, I think it'll pass.
Okay, what's the timeframe, and how long we have to wait, thirty days?
Well, you'd have to wait till the next, no, you'd have to wait till, you'd have to wait till twenty-twenty.
No, you have a special one, yes.
Well, yeah, but I don't wanna spend money on a special.
Well, you could do one next June during the primary, because we'll have a.
You, you could be waiting till, you'd have to wait till the twenty-twenty June, right, Mary?
Or election then?
No.
Twenty.
Two years, it'd be twenty-twenty June, right?
Two years.
It'd be the best time to do it, if you're gonna.
What's a special election policy, Andy? Ah.
I, I.
Just on a local.
I didn't know where we were gonna get this discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want to say thanks.
Well, we should, yeah, but.
Blowing the game up for a full again.
Uh, my fault, we're gonna talk about. The only problem I have with it, I have nothing wrong with a special election, other than the incurred cost, but I like having it on something where you're gonna get the most people voting. Simply because then you're, you know, you're allowing as many people in the electorate as possible to have a say in it. Now, I'm not saying that they can't come vote in the primary, they can't come vote in the special either. But, you know, I always like having the most, the widest net possible for people to, you know.
If they're interested in the issue, they'll be able to vote.
Yeah, that's right to a point, yeah, I agree.
And I think in school issue like that, a school bond, you have to wait thirty days before you can.
Yeah, I guess legally.
Then you, then you have to publicize, you know, put a notice out. So I think within sixty days you can do it again, or ninety. I believe you can, am I right?
You. Yeah. The, the one thing I would say is I think.
Freshen everybody's mind.
Yeah, I, I think.
Freshen everybody's mind.
The one thing I would say to it is I think if, if we're gonna go around and try to look at it again, we, and I, I agree with Paula, I mean, the education portion of it is the tough part. Because you can hold hearings, you can hold informational sessions, you can do coffee time, you can put an op-ed in the paper. But you, you know, it's not like a support measure three type of thing where you have outside funding to actually go out and try to advertise and educate people, this is county dollars, we have to do it for basically nothing. So we would have to come up with a better plan, I think, to try to outreach and educate.
Well, I think, I think even, even just, now that, now that there is sort of the charter, right? The beauty of that is, is that we don't have to go out and explain to people what Home Rule is in broad strokes, right, this time around. In other words, this time, we, we have the charter that was written, and we can say, this is what it does, this is what it can do for you.
Yeah.
Freshen everybody's mind. The ones who voted against it, did they read it? Probably not. You know, they just don't want no change. The ones that voted yes, they got knowledge a little of it, they understood what we wanted, Home Rule in itself. You know, if you let it go away for two years, wrong thing to do. That's Sweetwater Project, we went right back out as soon as we could.
Re-educate everybody all over again.
Yep, we went right back out, hit the second time as soon as we could.
Yeah, something to think of.
Because it was there, and it was needed, we were still using portable buildings, you know? We're handcuffed with that jail. Ten mills is all we can use on that jail, that's all we're supposed to be using. And when our general taps out, now what the hell are we gonna do? Start borrowing money?
I think.
So it's, it's, it's an easy sell to me.
Right. Well, Commissioner Brown, if, if you're interested in pursuing this again, then the first step is we would need to re-empower a charter committee, which can be done right now if you'd like.
Well, we won't do it right now. We'll wait a few days.
I, I think it's, it's worth some time to let it simmer a little bit, but if, if it's something we wanna look at again, I don't have a problem with that. It's just a matter of, I think, you know, like you said, we, like Lucas said, we have a good charter there. Try to, try to derive some feedback from the community on maybe where they thought it was good, maybe where they thought it was bad. Empower a committee, make some changes, and then, and then try to come up with a really good plan to educate better than we did this time.
You, you.
Don't wait two years, you'll not wait two years.
The only thing that scares me a little bit, Adam, about going back and making changes, I like separate government, don't get me wrong. But the other thing is, is then you're gonna have people who have different knowledges of what Ramsey County's Home Rule Charter is, you know what I mean?
No, I'm, I'm not saying to make necessarily big wholesale changes unless that's, you know, all, all I'm saying is that without feedback, you don't know why it could impact. And maybe there's one sticking point for a large portion of the electorate that voted no. And if there's one sticking point, then we can make that change. But otherwise, if it was just a matter of we didn't educate people well enough, well then we just need to come up with a better plan and really get out there and educate people.
I, I really think that that's, that's what it is, and, and, you know, I'm hoping, like I said, we talked to the state legislatures when they were here, but I'm really hoping that they can look into getting lodging tax. Because to me, to me, if you can, if you could have a county pass a lodging tax, this thing would be a home run. I mean, it'd be a home run slammed up. I mean, it's, it's, because, because then I think there's not a single person in this community who would say, huh, yeah, these people that are coming from Wisconsin, they're driving on my roads and putting wear and tear on them, I, I don't want them to contribute anything to maintenance. To me, there's nobody in the county that's gonna say that.
Sorry, I opened up a can of worms. Thank you, Paula, thanks for your help.
I should've put them up in agenda, too, I didn't think about it, but it's good to have discussion.
Thank you, Paula.
Another job for you.
We got partway there, we'll get there.
I know.
It takes a little time, we'll get there.
I know.
What was the, uh, when the votes came in, was it, was it under forty at the final?
It was forty-three.
Right, but, but then, then you get a couple more ballots in, or am I not allowed to vote yet?
It would, won't be enough to.
I know, I know, but if it was, but it was closer than.
There's, there were six set aside ballots that have to be counted at the canvassing board, and then we receive two by mail.
So, so.
Wait till the canvassing board. Done.
The only reason that I, isn't because I think it'll flip the election, but it's, you know, when you're closer than forty votes, if that's the way it ends, that's.
Who's on the canvassing board?
So what's funny, you get, Mark's looking at you like, what? What? At the end of the day, it got far closer than I thought. Than I thought it was gonna, it got far closer than I thought it would be, in all honesty. Which is the problem, is that we can't reassess and take the time and come back with it at some point.
Well, yeah, to, to me, that made it clear that it wasn't the wrong idea.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? If it was that close, I mean, I think to me that, that means that we were on the right track with pursuing it.
Yeah, just a matter of tweaking it and coming back with an idea, that's all.
It's a new deal, you know, it's just, it's new to people.
Cool, well, it's, it's gonna be ongoing discussion going forward, I think it's basically what we're coming from here. And, and put your ear to the ground and talk to people and see what they liked and what they didn't like, and then we can start moving forward with it, if that's what we wanna do again.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna wanna know. Okay, um. Ooh, yeah.
Yeah, I just finished my portfolio.
Jeff said you didn't have anything, not much.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, Paula kinda rolled this off as something else.
That's, that's good, it's a good, it was a good discussion, and we didn't beat out, so, thank you. Suzie, I didn't have anything else for your tourism leg access. Suzie was also helping us with the aquatic nuisance management plan in the state game and fish. She helped review that, and Devils Lake Basin is a part of that committee that did that, and Jessica Howell is with the game and fish. So now they have a new aquatic nuisance management plan for the next five years or so. That's what, probably a really major concern for Devils Lake. You get zebra mussels into this place, and, and it's absolutely devastating to a game fishery type of scenario that we have. You know, they populate incredibly fast and within the animal kingdom. And if you get those in another one or two type of aquatic nuisance species, Devils Lake as a fishery that it's known for could be very limited in its ability to reproduce fish or sustain a game fish. And I always go back to Lake Mulax in Minnesota, you know, they, in some sense, they overfished it, but also they acquired zebra mussels in there. And they have a no-walet catch program now, so it's catch and release only, so no, no keeping of walas. And it was, it's a lake about the size of Devils Lake. Yeah, it's, it's incredibly devastating. And Lake Winnipeg has it, you know, and what the zebra mussel is, it's a filter feeder, and so it'll filter water. And people think, well, that'd be great to clean up our water. Well, it, it starts reducing the, the microorganisms in the lower part of the food chain is what happens. And all of a sudden, now you don't have food service for the bigger game fish and things like that. There is a close relative to the zebra mussel, which is the aquago mussel, which survives in deeper water. It's prevalent in the great lakes now. And we had an estimate that every four and a half days, water in Lake Michigan is filtered out.
All of it?
All of it, every four and a half days. By the number of mussels that they have within that body of water. And you stop and think about that, and it's like.
It's like one of the biggest freshwater lakes.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, and, and they have, you know, drifts on their beaches of shells that get washed up, you know, because there's a life span with these zebra mussels once they, and they go through that lifecycle, and they die, then they get washed up on shore. And then they're, they have drifts, you know, this high of, of dead seashells on their shores. And you think Devils Lake is stagnant and stinks late part of August? And you put a couple billion dead, a lot of the seashells on the shorelines, and a nice stable reef.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna have to create a county department of shoreline cleanup.
Clean up the seashells.
So, yeah, Suzie, Suzie and I were both part of that ANS management plan, and hopefully, hopefully, we can, you know, knock on wood, keep that out of Devils Lake as long as possible. I know Minnesota's worked on some research to kill it in a cold water environment. But that's the, right now, the only way to kill zebra mussel is to drain it and, or, or chem- chemicalize it, you know, kill everything in it, and something we don't wanna do either. Very difficult to eradicate once you get it, so preventions.
Let's just keep.
Yeah, prevention, education, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of people that come, come and go within our area that are in bodies of water that already have zebra mussels. You know, they're, they're already in the river, you know, we have fishermen, hunters, whatever, you know, they'll hunt for fish in one body of water in the morning and come in the afternoon or vice versa, and still have that, you know, product within its boat or in their, on their lines or the rope or whoever.
It's like a clean and drain, is it?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Other than that, you know, we'll, and the airport, I think we'll meet within a week or two, and same way with the chamber. Unfortunately, they'll probably be on the same day because of the holiday, so.
Okay.
I'll flip the point.
I'll just send a email, and we'll, we can tackle this.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark?
Well, the only thing that I have, because the law enforcement center is always out there, is the airport is pursuing possibly building a huge indoor arena back behind the building to the north. We're checking in at some places, hoping forward with that, and that's all I got.
I'm looking for grants.
Grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get some outside money. I'd heard that that was coming down the pipe, so that'd be kind of interesting.
It'd be extremely beneficial out there.
Well, that place is utilized like crazy, so it'd be, it's gonna be something good to look at.
Yeah.
Okay, just from my aspect, I miss the county housing authority last month, since we were at the Association of Counties. I had forward Devils Lake yesterday, everything seemed to be going pretty well there. I'm sure you guys have seen some of the articles out about the workforce training initiative that we're working on. A lot of buy-in on that, so it's, it's, that's going well. Social services, we met, oh gosh, I can't even. But the one thing that I would mention is, you know, we're going into the legislative session now, elections are done. We're gonna have to keep a close eye on what the governance structure for social services is gonna look like going forward. If anybody sat in on the social services redesign thing down at the Association of Counties. The state is, it's not their official plan, I don't think at this point, but they're talking about possibly pushing for a zonal structure.
And that's. It's your dream, right?
Huh?
It's your dream?
It's, it's kinda what they're going from, and, and.
I have a idea, it's on the watch, really.
Yeah, there's a whole presentation on it. They, they looked at four different ways to administer social services to try to make it more efficient. And one, the, kinda the one they've settled on is a zonal structure where they're not gonna force you into zones, so to speak, but you're gonna have to kinda reposition what it ran.
Use not to roll in, huh?
Yes, basically. And, and we're kind of, I wouldn't say we're as a guinea pig, so to speak, but, you know, they're seeing how we can share services, like in a place like Lakes, and it's worked really well. So that's why they look at, the only, and I don't have a problem with sharing services and things like that, but the problem we're gonna run into is part of the governance structure is the state would pay part of the zone director's salary, like fifty-one percent is what their initial idea was, so the state would have the oversight. So basically, we would turn into a local advisory board, and that's where, that's where the.
Hangup is.
That's where the hangup is, and that's where the fight's gonna win.
What I'm doing now, best thing we can do is get the legislators in here again before they go to session.
Yeah.
And we're only gonna do it at the next meeting, or, or?
It probably wouldn't be bad to do it in December, simply because they're gonna reorganize committees and everything at that first meeting in December when the legislature meets down there and they swear in, so then we'll have an idea who's gonna be where. I would assume our guys are gonna stay in the same places, but.
In December, they'll be down there for meetings.
Yeah, but I'm saying the second meeting in December, it's an even meeting, we could probably get them in on that one and, and visit and vote it, because that'll be right before they go to session.
Okay.
I think that would be a good idea, just because.
Definitely a good idea to get them in here.
Yeah, but that's something we're really gonna have to watch, because otherwise, we're gonna, we have the possibility of losing multiple control on that, that's.
And I can just talk about the state having fifty-one percent, no, they're not gonna give up that idea.
No, I, I would be just fine with, if we gotta put some money in the budget to pay the director locally so that we can retain that control, I think that's what we wanna do. Lucas looks like he wants to say something.
Oh, no, I'm totally gonna change the subject.
Oh, okay, well, then I'm gonna. No, I'll keep rolling it.
Actually, I think it's to the best interest of the county to keep control of hiring our own director.
Yes, I agree with you.
I just, we'll take care of our salary.
Yeah, and that's where the county, and that's where the county employee versus the state employee comes in.
She's gonna run the program, they wanna generalize the whole state into one program eventually and run it all the same. Which, you know, probably is now, but they wanna have control, like you say, fifty-one percent.
And that's kinda, and, and that's just their initial sell point, basically, there, there's gonna be a lot of change from here until when this thing, this thing is gonna pass the, the last couple of days of the session. So we've got a lot of work to do in between now and then, to really try to get it to where we wanna get it to. And I, like I said, I don't, I don't think the zone structure is a bad idea. It's just the governance of the zones is where it's gonna, gonna be the crux.
But the col- counties you're going with, they gotta be willing to get along.
Yes, exactly, and that's where, from the social services aspect, from Ed and I sitting on Lakes, the Lakes Board, we're gonna have to start to talk about, you know, if this whole structure happens, who do we wanna work with to make this thing work for everybody? So that's gonna be a, there'll be a lot of, lot of meetings, probably trying to figure all this out in the near future. But that's where we have to start making some contacts with.
We gotta get the legislators looking for us down in our area.
So that's that, social services. Just a reminder to everybody, if you haven't got your department. So, that's that, social services, um, just a reminder to everybody, if, uh, you haven't got your department head reviews done, knock 'em out quickly, cause they pretty much have to be done by the twentieth. So, get them, uh, talk to Crystal if you need the review forms and all that kinda stuff, and then get them in, so that they can make the changes for salaries starting December one, for the January one pay. To get them knocked out. Uh, last thing I would mention is, uh, a big thank you to Candy and all the staff that ran the election.
Thank you.
You guys did a fantastic job. I mean, we had record turnout for a midterm.
Yeah.
We had twenty-eight hundred and some absentees and twenty-two thousand and change.
Twenty-three oh six on Election Day.
Which is crazy, compared to what we usually get in a midterm.
And twenty-eight, twenty-seven were by mail.
Yeah, that's, I mean, what, what would we usually expect for, I mean, the, the, the vote by mail was pretty consistent with what we usually get, but we would probably get, what, a thousand, fourteen hundred people, maybe?
Yeah, I'm like, two days.
So, they were coming all day and they did a fantastic job, I walked in, voted eleven-thirty, and it took me two seconds to get through, when the place was just consistently going, so we did a great job.
And I just wanted to say congratulations to you all for winning your reelection, you guys really blew out your competition.
That was the hardest campaign I've ever run.
Ninety-nine percent.
I, I'm gonna be interested to see how the breakdowns work, cause, you know, it always interests me that five thousand people vote, and then only three thousand and change vote, and that, I, I think they get confused, they can only vote for one, or, just kinda interesting to see how that breaks down.
You said in county, that all kinds of people voted for one thing. Maybe three, three vote for anything else.
Yeah, it's, it's just, cause you could break down how many people voted in each section, to see how many people walked in and like, voted only on one portion of it, you know, it's kinda interesting how that all works.
You can tell by the numbers.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda of interesting how that all breaks down, so. Okay, anything else from anybody? Okay, where it heard?